Evening. Calling to order this meeting of the Select Board of the Town of Arlington. It is June 17, 2019, just after 7:15 PM. We have two absent selectmen tonight. Joe Kuro is unable to join us, and Diane Mohan is with her grandson this evening. And so we are down to three, which means the meeting should go 60% faster, depending upon how you do the math. To my right is Selectman John Heard. I'm Selectman Dan Dunn. To my left is Selectman Steve DeCoursey. With us professionally, we have Town Manager Adam Chapdolane, Town Council Doug Heim, and Board Administrator Marie Karpelka. And I like to have a quote, but I don't have a quote. But I will say, did you guys know that we've already passed the date with the earliest sunrise? The sunrise is actually already getting later, even though the days are still getting longer for two more weeks. Yeah, you learned something, whether you wanted to or not. Just if you're here for the National Grid item, when we get there, we're going to be not doing that one because of logistical reasons. So if you're here for National Grid, you don't need to be here. First up, item number one is discussion and approval of creation of complete count committee for 2020 census. Kelly Linema? I don't know. Is it Linema?
It's okay.
I apologize.
Kelly Linema.
Linema, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Kelly Linema, Department of Planning and Community Development. Thank you so much for having me here tonight to talk about the Complete Count Working Group. As you know, the 2020 decennial census is approaching. It's mandated by the Constitution. The Census Bureau has taken account of everyone in the United States every 10 years since 1790. Collecting this information is a critical government function. It is the basis for reapportioning of congressional seats. Many states stand to gain or lose seats based on the outcome of the 2020 census. It informs redistricting efforts, even at the level of local precincts, which we saw in 2010, for the next 10 years. It also determines the distribution of $675 billion of federal funding every year. This funding goes to support local programs from early education and Section 8 housing to Medicaid, Medicare, public transportation, and infrastructure. Basically, every person who's not counted equals $2,400 in federal funding lost every year for the next 10 years. So it's very significant. While completing the census is mandatory, the reality is that the 2020 census faces both new and old challenges. Since 1970, mail-in response rates have steadily decreased decade after decade, requiring increased door-to-door efforts by census enumerators. Federal funding for Census 2020 is well below funding levels for prior-year censuses. So we're combining these two problems. In addition, the 2020 census will be the first time that individuals can respond online, which is great. We're all excited about that. It'll make it easier. But at the same time, this is a change. Change requires additional education and outreach, and it can be confusing for some folks. And finally, the trust in government is at historic lows. It's increasingly hard to count certain populations, and particularly with the proposed addition of the citizenship question. This will be determined by the Supreme Court in the next few weeks. If this citizenship question is added to the census, we're afraid that there may be a risk of lowered response rates. So Arlington, in Arlington, we have a small group of interdepartmental staff who've been trying to prepare for the census. We have been discussing how we can best support the census. We've been contributing to the local update of census addresses. It's sort of a basic initiative where we're making sure addresses are up to date, so that when we have local census individuals who are going out to double-check on populations, they have the correct addresses. We're also working with state efforts to analyze our census tracts and block groups. But in the past few weeks, we've been really ramping up that work. Our members have attended panel discussions at MAPC. We've heard from the New York Regional Office of the Census Bureau and neighboring municipalities on how best to prepare. And Representative of John Barr's office at the Massachusetts Secretary of State came to Arlington a few weeks ago to discuss how we can coordinate efforts with them to make sure we get a complete count. Through these meetings and research, it's become clear that a Complete Count Working Group, this would be a group comprised of both town staff, but also local business leaders and trusted residents and trusted community leaders, would be the best vehicle for reaching out to Arlington residents to convey the message that the census is safe, confidential, easy, and important. To our knowledge, there wasn't an equivalent effort in 2010. There may not have needed to be, because funding was higher. We do know that in 2011, there were, there was, 15 of our 21 precincts were redrawn as a result of census data. One of the additional initiatives that a Complete Count Working Group could take on is to document the work that we do in preparation for the 2020 census, so we're not reinventing the wheel in 2029, which will come faster than we think it will. But again, due to decreasing response rates and low funding levels for the 2020 census, local initiatives, we believe, are critical to ensuring that each Arlington resident is counted. You've each received a copy of a memo that describes the recommended composition of a Complete Count Working Group, the residents or the community leaders, we believe, should be involved, the goals for that working group, and the work they would do, and a timeline of their activities. To sum it up, a Complete Count Working Group is a cross-section of community leaders. These are trusted members who would focus on raising census awareness, basically kind of a marketing outreach and engagement campaign. They create census awareness campaigns that are targeted to the community. They know members of the community. They know how to speak to them to get them to respond. And they implement creative outreach strategies in areas that are hard to count. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about a Complete Count Working Group. But essentially, establishing this kind of working group would be Arlington's next step in supporting an equitable and complete count for the 2020 census. It would demonstrate that we will work to ensure that every resident in Arlington is counted, because every resident in Arlington counts.
Questions? Comments?
Steve, thank you for the presentation. Just a question, and maybe this is for Town Council. Are we being asked to approve the makeup of the group, or just approve the concept, Doug?
I think we were asking to approve the makeup of the group. With any amendments you want to suggest as well.
Okay. And just wondering, I see different representatives here. Is there a number that you were looking for? I mean, some of the categories, it's multiple members. It looks like nonprofit leaders, it's whoever would be interested. Was there a particular number that you were looking for?
Depending on the size of the community. I know Boston's is huge, and they actually have a lot of subcommittees, but it's Boston. It can range anywhere from 10 to 25. And I know that, you know, thinking about leaders and houses of worship, we have a number of them in Arlington. It may just come down to who has the time and is able to commit and actually help us with this initiative. So we're not looking for a precise number right now, but we're looking for people who are interested in committing, maybe committing to meeting once a month between now and next June, and then doing individual outreach efforts to local residents.
Okay. And one thing I see, and it looks like a great cross-section, but just maybe a citizen representative or two, because there's, people fall into different categories here, but just the individual might be interested in participating in that. It seems like it could be added. Last thing is, in the local media, I take ACMI and the Advocate to be a for example, because I want to be fair to your Arlington, too, on that. But it would just be any media representative.
Yes, my apologies. Correct.
Mike, one comment was going to be to make sure you include your Arlington, so Steve beat me to that. So I'll move approval of the establishment of a Complete Count Working Group, subject to the criteria set forth in the memorandum before us.
I'll second that.
Steve asked a question, but I didn't quite get there. So is this going to be a Town Manager Working Group, or that, and you're just asking for us to weigh in and endorse it? Or do you want this, is this like actually a working group of the Board of Selectmen? Or how do you?
I think because of the importance of this, we probably want this to be a working group of the Select Board, and I would anticipate we'd bring back a whole slate for you to approve, once we've recruited people, so that you can, so you're endorsing creating it, and then we'd further ask you to endorse the people serving on it.
Okay. I'm assuming that's where you moved?
Yes. So moved.
Yeah, so the only thing, I mean, given that, and I'm for it, but I would like to amend that, to add a citizen representative.
So moved.
Okay. Any further discussion? No, I'll just say, I'm just accepting it as, yeah. I'm not as, exactly. We know what we wanted to do.
Only two roles here.
Well, no, this, yeah, exactly. Any further discussion? All right. All the motion by Mr. Heard, second by Mr. DeCoursey. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Three, zero vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Hey, Len and Sean, I'm getting a little bit of an echo, and I think it's from the speaker by my feet, and it's, I don't know if that's turned up a little higher than usual or something. Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, we go through each of these items, or we don't go through each of these items, but we approve them all on one vote unless somebody asks to pull it out separately. So we've got the minutes of meeting on May 20 and June 3 of this year. We've got approval of temporary parking restrictions on Lombard Road for the Arlington Food Pantry. We have the Arlington International Film Festival banners to go up. We have a revision to a handicap parking space at 35 Sherburne Street. And we have reappointments to the Board of Youth Services of Kristen Barnacle, Conservation Commission of Charles Tyrone, Council on Aging of Rick Fenton, Human Rights Commission of Sherry Barron, Open Space Committee Wendy Richter, and also David White. And it's worth noting, just to remind people, that when you're reappointed, you don't actually have to appear, but you're very welcome to. And we got a very nice note from Sherry Barron, who couldn't be with us. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak to any of those items? Come on up, please. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Hi, my name is Jim Muncie. Live at 215 Mass Ave. I'm currently a member of the Council on Aging Board. I've been lucky and honored to have worked with Rick Fenton for the last three years, and he's been my co-chair for the last year. And he thoroughly deserves another three-year term, and Arlington is much better off for having him on that board. On a more personal note, and I've cut this by 40%, so we're all good. The end of my six years on the board is next week. And I want to thank the Select Board for what they've done for us. Joe Coro as our liaison, Town Manager Adam, Jenny Raitt, the Director of Planning and Community Development, Susan Karp, the Executive Director, Christine Bonjourno, Human and Health Services Director, who helped us out when Susan was out for months due to an operation. You people listened to us. You increased funding for various positions, social workers, and a nurse, and so on and so on, for programs. You made the bricks disappear around the building. That's huge when you're talking about a senior center, and especially in the winter, and people with their walkers. You funded much-needed rehab of the senior center to be renamed the Arlington Community Center. And guess who come up with that name? That's why I thank you for the opportunity to have served Arlington, and I wish you well.
Thank you very much. We appreciate both your service and your very kind words. Thank you very much.
You deserve it. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on other items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, a motion by Mr. Heard, second by Mr. DeCoursey. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right, done. Next up, we have a public hearing. EverSource petition for Lowell Street, Jacqueline Duffy. This is a public hearing, and it is after 7:15, so take it away.
Good evening. Jackie Duffy, EverSource Energy. We'd like to install 12 feet of conduit on Lowell Street in Arlington. This work is necessary to supply electric service to 20 Westminster Avenue.
All right. Is there anybody who wishes to speak about this particular application? Do we have any questions from the Board about this particular application? Does someone want to make a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Second by Mr. DeCoursey. Oops. Wrong page. Making sure, gone once, twice, three times. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Passed. Thank you. I remember, National Grid, we are going to table or withdraw? Table.
I'm going to table it.
Okay, because it is tabled. Next up, Bellevue Road and Morton Road. Joe Kavici, or Representative? Come on up. Do you want to, so we've got your package, but at the same time, why don't you tell us just a little bit about the project and what's going on?
So we're, I'm the president of our local road association. It's called the Bellevue Morton Association. It's been in existence for quite several decades. We've reached a point where we need to resurface, so mill and resurface our road. Now, two years ago, the gas company had come through and replaced the mains. In the process, they did their fair amount of, you know, temporary patching, and then we had some other maintenance issues that we'd put off. The gas company agreed to fund a portion of the resurfacing and milling in order, if we gave them a release. And then we also have collectively saved money for, you know, many, many years, more than 20 now. And so we've gone out, solicited bids, submitted them to the town, through the Select Board here, and to the Engineering Department, and we're requesting that a portion, it's roughly, I think, 25%, be recovered, be funded by the town, and then I guess we either pay it off in a lump sum, or it becomes a portion of a taxable amount for five years. And so I understand for us to proceed forward, we have to get approval from the Select Board. That's why we're here. Thank you.
Cool. And so just to refresh people, and the rules under this is that if you get more than 2/3 of the yeses, then it comes, but you don't need, if you get to unanimity, you can just do it yourself. But when you're not unanimous, then it takes the Board to get involved. And by the paperwork that you get within our pack, we're at 27 yeses out of 31 butters. Questions from the Board?
One question. Are the empty spaces no's, or just you didn't get a response from them?
Well, I would have to, I would have to ask the town here. My suspicion is that they just weren't able to respond.
Sure. Yeah.
I would say they didn't respond.
Yeah, I think this is a...
One, so we have one neighbor who's, who's very aged, and I'm sure she didn't respond.
Sure.
And then I don't know. I know we have one neighbor who's been traveling a lot, but, to be honest with you, now I understand, we have to get all 31 to sign the waiver, so.
Or if you did, it would be very, very difficult, you mean?
Oh, really? I understood. To actually go forward, my last bit of understanding is the waiver process requires 31, 31 households to sign.
I don't think so. Doug will clarify for us.
Oh, Doug.
Mr. Dunn, FMA? Are you talking about a waiver from the utilities or from the town?
It's a hold harmless provision, was my understanding. And when I asked about it, I was informed that I needed 31 folks to sign it. So I think it has to do with, I actually can't say exactly, but you're the lawyer. It sounded to me like you won't be responsible if there's some damage, for example, by the milling machine.
I think we can talk about this offline, Mr. Chair. I think that there might be some conflation of issues for the utilities versus the town.
Okay. Yeah. It's definitely my understa, yeah. I'm not a lawyer, and so I can just tell you what I think. And my understanding is that we can, with the, with the data that you've collected and with our vote, you can get the work done, once you collect the basis, when you start collecting the deposits. So, but I'm, Doug will...
You're here to vote on the betterment, for which you do not need a unanimous petition. So the betterment is basically the town's financing of the project. We can talk a little bit more about the town's expectations in terms of releases versus the utilities' expectation. But I think that's, I don't see any reason why the Board can't proceed.
Okay.
Can I just make one general comment? I applaud you for going through this process, because for, it was about six months ago, we dealt with a lot of private way requests, and some of them were reasonable, some of them were unreasonable. But, I mean, we're all constrained by the Private Way Act, so this is the proper avenue for people to get their private ways completely redone. You've gone through the process. You have almost unanimous support, which is really telling of the situation, so.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Is there a motion? Sorry, or a question?
No, I'll move approval of the betterment order contained in our agenda.
Second.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to this issue, particularly residents of those streets? Any further discussion from the Board? Seeing none, all those in favor, a motion from Mr. DeCoursey, second by Mr. Heard. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Three, zero vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Radamacher, I'll just hit now there, just for the seal of this one?
He's in a vote.
Oh, good reason. Next up, food vendor license Arlington Bakery, 187 Mass Ave, Evangelia Valensis. Welcome and feel free, please, to tell me what I said wrong.
You said it correctly, Valensis. Good evening.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about your business and the change you're making?
I'm not making any changes right away. I'd like to see how the bakery's going to do once it's mine. And then I want to see how, it's my first bakery, so I've been in the restaurant business my whole life, but this is a first time as a baker. So I want to see how things go, and then start incorporating my own menu. So the menu's going to stay as is for now, and just add my own little spin to it as I get more and more comfortable.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions from the Board? Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, all on the motion by Mr. Heard, second by Mr. DeCoursey. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Three, zero vote. Good luck. Welcome to Arlington.
Thank you.
All right. Citizens Open Forum. Is there anybody here who wants to speak for Citizens Open Forum? Not seeing anybody, so I'm going to move past it. Traffic Rules and Orders, for approval, Boston Women's Market at Uncle Sam Plaza. Cara LaFredo. Welcome.
Hi there. My name is Cara LaFredo. I'm the directing organizer of Boston Women's Market. We are an organization that creates selling experiences for women-owned businesses and entrepreneurs. So we have members who are just jewelry Etsy makers, who have brick and, or they might have brick and mortar stores in the Boston neighborhood. So we want to bring Boston Women's Market to Arlington. This would be our first time bringing Boston Women's Market to this side of town. We kicked off the selling season in Jamaica Plain at the Lauren Gredeck House, where we had 60 vendors, musicians, and we drew about 1,500 people. So it was a really great kickoff event for the year. So I was immediately attracted to coming to Arlington, because it's just like a vibrant green community, has a lot of great center spaces, and I thought it would be a great place and first-time opportunity to introduce our entrepreneurs to this new community. One of the reasons why we like popping about and changing the location around the Boston metro area is to expose and help market these small businesses to different neighborhoods and to different residents of different communities. I am a Cambridge resident, so I'm always in Arlington, and it's always been on my list to try to bring Boston Women's Market to the area.
Thank you. Questions, Mr. Heard?
So this is a great idea. I'm excited. Just a question about the layout. So we have, if you can see there, where are the tables going to be for the vendors?
So I would plan to have the tables only utilizing the green spaces. So the brick walkways that you have weaving about, those would all stay open for footpaths. One of the unique things about this market is it's a small space. So we would be limiting, usually vendors have 10 by 10 tents that protect them from the sun or the rain. We wouldn't be allowing 10 by 10 tents, because it is such a small space. But they would still be allowed a 6 by 6 space, which is quite generous when you compare it to New England markets, who often restrict vendors to a four-foot space. So this market is a little unique. We had a market similar to it in Rosendale last year, where they weren't allowed to bring tents, but they had a 6 by 6 space, and everyone was happy, and it worked out well. Yeah.
So my only concern, which is easy to remedy, is right, when you're here, there's going to be a lot of people on the bike path, kind of...
On the bike path.
So you might want to think about some sort of a temporary barrier along the bike path there, that if people, just so somebody that's at the tables, step out.
Do you mean in back of the vendors, so they don't back up into the bike path?
Just along the bike path.
Oh, I see.
I mean, if there's expected 600 people, which would be amazing.
And that one's...
That's just the one area where you get people here, and then kind of the bikes coming around that might not know, as they come around the back, that there's going to be so many people there.
Yeah.
So I think if you just line it along the bike path, it kind of takes away a little bit of the uncertainty. I don't know how that encroaches on...
I would have to go measure, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, yeah, because I agree with Mr. Heard. It looks a little tight there, and for safety reasons, with the bike path. But on the request for 25, do you, would end up, how do you select the 25? Because it sounds like you have much more vendors.
Oh, yeah. We have, we have a member database right now of almost 500 women vendors in the Boston area, and that's growing every day. So it's, we use a first-come, first-served policy, and then we review applications, make sure they're aligned with the Boston Women's Market initiative, and then notify the vendors who are confirmed to then go ahead and register. Yeah.
Thank you.
One other question.
Yeah, go ahead.
And then have you coordinated, and I'm sorry if it's in this here, but have you coordinated with the Arlington Community and Tourism? Who runs the visitors?
I don't believe I've been in contact with anyone from the Tourism Bureau.
Ally, they haven't met in several months, and Ally's...
Oh, that committee.
They haven't convened a meeting.
Yes, we requested, yeah, we requested a support letter from them, but they, they haven't met and won't be...
Yeah, and I'm sure, I'm the liaison, so I don't think they'll have any objections to it. It brings people to, but a lot of the layout here is kind of sitting right on top of the visitor's center that could be open at that time. So you have to coordinate, like it says, staff tables on the front deck to the visitor's center.
And to clarify that, it is just one 6 by 6 table, where people can sign up for our newsletter, or just learn more about our organization. We usually do some kind of raffle giveaway with the vendors, where people can enter a raffle, to win goods from the vendors that are there, that sort of thing.
Yeah, so we have a gentleman that runs the visitor's center on behalf of that committee now, and I would just reach out to him, just to coordinate, so he has a heads-up that day.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Questions? Motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Motion by Mr. Heard. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. There's three, zero vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, request, two spaces for overnight parking on 118 Westminster Avenue. So we heard this at our previous meeting, and we tabled it so that we could take another look at it. And we also got a letter from the, with a, what do you call it, like a traffic report from the Advocates, and I definitely, we got at least one email from a resident, and so I think that that, and so I also, I'll say, I did get a chance to go out and look at it. So having said all that, I think that kind of catches up to where we are right now, and I'm going to go in, and I see somebody standing at the microphone, which means I'm probably going to call him, unless there's someone from the Board who wanted to start it off with anything else. Okay. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Will Stansbury. So my wife Diane and I live at 118 Westminster. She's unable to attend tonight. She had an out-of-town family event, but, you know, we're here to present, you know, additional information, I think, from the last time for, you know, for a permit for overnight, a permanent permit for overnight parking. So just a reminder, like you said, you know, of some of the reasons why we're requesting it, configuration of our driveway really restricts us to safely get in and out of our driveway, right? So we've been, we've been here for 20 years, have parked in the buffer between the sidewalk and the, and the street for that amount of time, because it's unsafe to park in the, in the back part of our driveway. And we're not, we're not here, you know, against the overnight parking ban, but just, you know, hopefully to consider our case around what's there. So after the May 20 meeting, you've got the report. So after the May twenty meeting, you've got the report. We had a traffic survey done and an engineer take a look at the back, and we submitted that report. And, and just a couple of things from the report, right? He talks about our access is through an easement on the, so we have no direct access to the, the back road. And so we have to do two ninety-degree turns to get up into our driveway. And, and you know, and we have some pictures here to, to show, but the, you know, and, and so it's awkward and unsafe to get there. Also reversing out of the driveway, it's again, from the report, impractical and unsafe with the retaining wall with our neighbor's house behind us. And then as you come out of the driveway, there's also a, a, a post for the electrical and, and also a fire hydrant. So if you're trying to turn to come down the road, and then there's, and there's, in any configuration, it's hard for us because it's our neighbor's wall on one side and our, and the easement on our other neighbor's property. So there's no real, real way for us to change to give us broader access to do there. There's still the two ninety-degree turns to get to our driveway to get in there. And so, you know, it's really a, a safety issue for us, and that's what we're asking you guys to consider for us. So thank you. I mean, that's what, I, I did have one more.
Letter from our next board member.
Thank you. Who also is, is in support of us parking there, but you know, they're, they're our new neighbor there. So I'm happy to, any questions you guys have?
Thank you. Any immediate questions from the board, or should I invite the speakers? All right. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this particular issue?
Do you guys have a question?
All right. So my name is Christopher Walters. I'm at one-five-four Westminster, and I did give Diane a letter that I wrote, I'll give it to you now, last time. I'm not sure if she gave it to you or not.
I don't, I don't recall either. Thank you.
So that was a letter in favor also. So I lived on Westminster Avenue for twenty-two years, and you know, I have, this wouldn't affect me. I have no skin on the game whether the Stansburies can or can't. I have off-street parking. It's safe. It's fine. It works for me. So it doesn't really matter to me personally one way or the other. In the case of the Stansburies, you know, I've heard some feedback that, you know, well, the rules are the rules and you have to apply the rules evenly, et cetera, et cetera. But you know, the truth is, we could have that conversation all night because some people obey the rules around Arlington and others don't because of various circumstances. So that would take a long time and all night to argue that point, and no one would really win it. But in the end game, what I, the reason why I want to speak on behalf of the Stansburies is they really have extraordinary circumstances based on the report that you got from the traffic engineer. So it's not just an inconvenience for them. It really is an unsafe condition through an easement. So I, I, I just want to say, on my behalf, I think this really is an extraordinary case that bears like special, special attention.
Anybody else? One up?
My name's John Madrid. I live at one-thirty-four Westminster Avenue. My wife and I have lived there thirty-two years, so we've seen all our neighbors and parking and stuff on the, on their street. Over that whole time, you know, the parking on the, the, where the Stansburies Park has never been a problem for us. You know, the street gets plowed in the wintertime, the, the, the Stansburies plow their sidewalk and it's, it's, the cars are out of the way. And I do know that their driveway is a real problem when it comes to safely getting in and out of there. I walked through it the other day just to kind of see if I could walk it, and it's, it's just a tough situation. And it, it's not safe getting in and out of there. I just, I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. All right. We've got two people who are moral, more, two more, three more moral supporters out there. Discussion from the board or a motion?
I went, so I went out there and I used to live in a house that had no driveway, and we had a really tough situation. But I mean, I understand, we were in front. How you park in Westminster is actually a secondary issue. We have a first issue that we tackle. And when we do this, we've been trying to make this easier on these applications is the first question becomes, do you have parking? And I went, I got the report from the engineer, but I also went out there. We went out there after the last meeting, and in my opinion, you can get into the driveway. There's a couple spots. There's a garage that was at some point blocked off. I think there is some work that can be done to widen the driveway on your own property. So.
Yeah. Let him keep going.
Yeah, no.
I'll let other people speak, but I would do a motion for no action on the petition.
Your motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion. So I have a question for Mr. Stansbury. On, on the picture that we received from the engineer, they measured the, the width of the driveway or the easement, right-of-way area, nine feet, three inches. And I've also visited the property. I think that the West Court Terrace probably has seen more traffic in the last two weeks than it, than it has in the last few months. But I also took a look at the deeds for, for your property and for your neighbor on West Court Terrace. And so you've got a ten-foot right-of-way that actually extends for the length of your property. So it's fifty-one feet long according to the deeds. And I'm just curious on the, call it the right-of-way area, is anybody using that at night?
So our neighbor has two cars. They have a driveway space on the, on the left side of their house for one car, and then they have a, the other space. So if they're off-street, off of West Court Terrace, then they need to be on the other side. So the length, are you talking about the section, the short section there that's driveway? Or the other space that's more gravelly and moved up on that, on the side of there?
Well, one of the questions I had when your wife was here last month is what is the extent of the right-of-way? Because it was unclear to me where the boundaries were. So that's why in, on top of looking at it, I just went to the deeds.
Yep.
And your neighbor, I think, purchased this house within the last couple of years that the, the lot line, that right-of-way, which is the driveway including both the paved part, and it appears that it's both the gravel part and the paved part, that is all right-of-way. It's not just limited to the part that turns up into your driveway, and it's fifty-one feet long.
Yep.
And again, that's the entire length of your, the back of your property, just over fifty-one feet, and then some of your neighbor, that's covered by the wall area.
Right.
Okay. So.
Yeah, so, so sometimes their car is on the bottom space of there. They don't usually pull forward to the gravelly part. I mean, I, and I don't know from the, a right-of-way, as I understood, is we have a right to go through it up into our driveway, not that we could leave our car.
No, that's right.
Correct.
And, and the reason why I ask that, I'm just wondering if there's ever been any discussion between you and your neighbor as far as what can be done just at night for that right-of-way? Because the other concern that I have, and it's, it's, Mr. Hurd raised it in terms of the question of is there parking or not? Well, you've got a tight turn. There's no question from the right-of-way area up into your driveway. However, that whole driveway is available for access, that whole right-of-way area is available for access to your property. Now, I know you have a wall that you constructed there, but when I looked at your driveway and then if you look at the four houses that are on Westminster, that, that back on the West Court, the fourth house to the right has a similar situation to you, although their access is better admittedly. They have widened the area behind their house, and it looks like that has created more parking. And so the concern I have, that I have trouble getting over the initial threshold question that Mr. Hurd raised, that if there is parking, then that's, that, that's our threshold question about there being a waiver or not. And as I look at this, I wonder if you've looked into either attempting to work something out with the, with, or reach some sort of accommodation with your neighbor below you on West Court Terrace? Or two, have you looked into the possibility of widening your driveway? Because they have to give you the access from the right-of-way to it because it's, it's that whole length.
Yeah, so why, so widening the driveway in, into the yard.
On your property.
Onto my property and then using, so asking.
Save a wider turn radius.
Right, right. So asking them to, to, to give up their right-of-way, or so again, the, the property on their side, right? So I could ask them, right?
No, no. Well, theoretically, a right-of-way, you could have a car coming in every hour, twenty-four hours. You have the right to pull into your, into your property.
Right.
And they have to give you that right. And so that's, I'm just wondering if there's any, if, it sounds like there hasn't been any discussion on that point, but if, it, it seems to me that that may be a way to try to address this issue between private parties as opposed to having us look into a, a waiver that, that really doesn't fit our criteria, frankly. I mean, that's, that's, you know, unfortunate result of it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think two, two things come to mind, sort of, I mean, cost of, of, of doing all of that work to be able to do that. I mean, again, I think, I don't know when, that you talk about our neighbor's four, three houses down, right? It's been that way since we've been there for twenty years. I'm not sure, right, that, I'm sure the, the folks who were there. So I, I mean, again, I, I guess there's the, the cost piece, and I, I think there's still an, an issue. I mean, I, I know our neighbors don't use that because getting, even getting that right-hand turnout of there, the right-of-way into the road, based on the, the pole and the, and the turnout onto the driveway. So I mean, again, maybe it's just, you guys would call it inconvenient, right? I, you know, it's, you know, if we, we'd have to find a way to get two cars not using our driveway space that's there now, right? Because I would, I would almost say you can't pull up forward to be able to pull out. So you're, now you're talking about, you know, tearing out the yard space and trying to put something over there. We, that hasn't been investigated. I, you know, I, I don't, you know, it seems cost prohibitive, but I don't know what the, the town has to say about sort of forcing, you know, thousands of dollars to be spent on, to, to do that versus, you know, so, you know, workable situation. I, I don't, I don't know, right? So that's, that's sort of where I'm.
Okay. And, and, and just one other.
Yep.
Comment, and this came up from the last meeting in terms of what the, the right-of-way was. So this, this right-of-way looks like it was created actually in nineteen twenty-two. The house on West Court was built in nineteen twenty-six, but there's a, there's a plan that's not available online at the registry, but it's available at the registry, that created all of the lots in your area. And that ten-foot right-of-way was created at that time. So it was, there was some discussion at the last meeting that did your driveway extend all the way down to Lowell Street, and, and it didn't.
Yeah, so the other house was done before.
Or, or the lots were created.
Yeah.
That would have occurred at that point.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, again, I, I mean, there's the right-of-way piece. It's still assuming we have to, you know, to get up into our yard space back to theirs, you know, some kind of turn or shift up into our yard space, back out and through and, and still, you know, another right-hand turn there. I, I don't know. I mean, it's still, you know, I, I, I guess we could survey it and cost and see if you want to table it, but I don't, you know, I don't know that, you know, and see if there's a way, but I don't, you know, it seems, well, you know, I, I, I guess it's not around, you know, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is I guess it's a, the safety versus the, you know, the cost and what we need to do to, to do that. I understand what you're saying. It, it does seem like, you know, when, when I, you know, the one thing I have trouble with is there's a lot of folks, you know, on the street, there's, you know, one car garage, and then I know that we're not talking about the town-wide issue here, right?
Yeah, it is also just like, um, technically, right now, technically you're answering Mr. De Corsi's question, so like, all right, so like, I'm gonna, do you want to, okay.
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, so, so no, we have not looked into that.
Okay.
Or talking to our neighbor around it.
Yeah. I have a question. I do, I, I do have some thoughts. So I am, I'm definitely, so I went out and took a look to, and as, as people I'm sure who either were here or watched last week know, I was on the fence about this one last week, but once I saw it, it was actually a lot easier for me to agree with the, the motion of, of no action. There are, we have, and I've, there are parts of the speech that I've given many times before, but perhaps some people haven't, many people haven't heard it yet, which is parking is a scarce resource in town, and it's something that we have to allocate, and it is in really high demand. And the town has spoken really clearly that it doesn't want on-street parking overnight. I would love to roll that back, and I have, and I was one of the people who wanted to do it on the last ballot, and it just, and it totally lost. And, but in places that I think that I could make the case that I could win over the public maybe include things like the marked spaces on Mass Ave, that I think those I could get to do some overnight parking. But I'll say, but even for this particular issue, I even had a couple of people reach out to me and say, talk about how they were glad that we're looking at this and that we were going to clean it up because they didn't like the fact that there were cars out on Westminster. Like, one person sent me an email, and one person gave me a call. And it is true, the thing, the tricky, really hard part of this is like, is that there's like the practice of it. The people have been doing it for a long time, whether it was legal or not. And this is, I will say, probably the third time that I've been involved in the board where we like had to get in and like, I don't know, revise, like revise what the people's activities were based on what the past activities. So the other one was Upper Forest Street, which was very similar situation to yours. Another one, which was similar, not exactly the same, but was Swan Place, which was very, very difficult for us to resolve. And so, but at the, but at the same time, I am at this place where it's like, I feel like I need to apply uniformly, and I agree that there's a lot of cost with you making it work for your property, but we've also, but that is, it's the same standard that we have applied in the past where we said, you know, there's something you can do here. And so sometimes people have gone back and blasted out the ledge to put in their space, and that's the way, the solution that they, they did for it. So unfortunately, I am gonna, I'm gonna support Mr. Hurd's motion unless there's some, something particularly creative coming in the next few seconds.
Yeah, well, I, I, I'm gonna make a motion to amend Mr. Hurd's motion to, to give you some time. And, and so what I would move is, is to grant a temporary waiver through September thirtieth, roughly three months, for you to invest, take a look at options to, to widen your access. And, and the reason I bring that motion is, I gave, you know, we all use Google Maps. Well, this is a Google Maps picture of your street in August of two thousand twelve when you were parking on the street. Here's a picture from, also from August of two thousand twelve. Your neighbor must have been, prior neighbor was probably doing work on the house, and there's a storage shed in the driveway. So clearly you weren't using the driveway. So there is a, a, a passage of time here where it, it seems unfair to me to, to tell you tonight, beginning tonight, you gotta go in and, and, and park in that driveway. However, I do come out on the side of Mr. Hurd, and it sounds like Mr. Dunn, in terms of this, in my mind, doesn't qualify for a waiver for the, under the standards that we have, but perhaps that buys you a little bit of time. Just remember, your, your right-of-way area, well, it doesn't give you exclusive use of that area. It doesn't give your neighbor exclusive use of it either. So this may be a situation where maybe there is something that can be worked out among you over the, over the next few months. So I'd make that motion to make this temporary to a date certain.
I mean, I wouldn't support it in its current form, whether or not it can be, like, I mean, I, I think there is definitely something that can be done, but if there's not, I mean, I went to the property and I just think that, that there is access, there is parking.
Okay. And I can, sorry, no, we gotta, so we've got a motion. I'm gonna, I, I think I'm on the no action vote, vote myself, so I think here.
All right. If you could, can we get a second and vote the amendment then? Because I, I could.
I'll second it for a vote.
Second, second. All right. So did you have a specific reaction to the, to the temporary version that you wanted to share?
Well, my, my, what I wanted to state is that, you know, the, do we agree that the driveway and the configuration it is, is unsafe to park in? And so, so that would be my question, because I'd, I'd invite, people have walked it. I'd invite somebody to come up and pull into the driveway and then back out of the driveway. So, so I, I understand that, and so if, so, because that's what we've done a handful of times since we've lived here twenty years, and I wouldn't want my kids doing it, that there's no, you know, from some of the things they said on the report. So even if we were, so back to maybe this does sort of support if we're gonna do something, I would say we need to investigate and see what we can do versus saying parking in the driveway as it is, is a, is a safe endeavor. So that, that would be what I would add. So maybe that means that we have to investigate what, what Mr. De Corsi said, but that's, you know, I would, I would argue that the report and that, and what we say is that it's, it's unsafe in the configuration that it is now.
Yeah. My answer would be, is that I think that the, that the property is config, is configurable to a more desirable parking situation, so that's why I don't think it meets the qual, criteria for a waiver. So places where we have given a waiver before include where the entire frontage of the house is up on the road, and so like there is literally no room for there anywhere to be a, a driveway. That would be a hardship situation where there literally is no configuration available, whereas in this case, there's property changes that can happen, that I, in my opinion, property changes can happen that can make a driveway viable. So for me, that's why it doesn't meet the criteria.
Understand.
Yep. You kind of gotta come to the mic. There's somebody, yeah. Thank you.
Sorry, I understand, but you're saying, but I, I think maybe we were saying the same thing. You're saying there are changes that can be made to make it, but I'm saying right now. now, but those changes might take time. Like.
Yeah.
Uh, so what do we, what's the answer in the meantime till we get there? That's the temporary. So that, so I, that, that's.
I understand. All right. So further discussion? All right. So we're gonna take a vote on Mr. De Corsi's, um, amendment first. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
Nay.
No. One, zero, or excuse me, one, two, amendment fails. Um, Mr. Hurd's motion of no action. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Three, zero vote. Thank you for your time, uh, attention. All right. Uh, next up, we've got.
Can I ask a question?
Uh, sure.
Please.
Please introduce, please, please introduce. Come on up to the mic.
De Corsi from nine, ninety-one Westminster Avenue.
Yep.
I was curious, you said you had some complaints about the parking in Westminster. So what was the nature of those complaints?
I, I'll be, feel free to contact me after the meeting. Uh, like I'm moving on to the next item.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep. Uh, my, yeah, email and phone are on the website. It's, uh, my cell phone right here. It's up there.
For discussion approval, package store, alcohol license application process criteria. Doug Heim.
Members of the board, you'll recall that due to the successful passage of special legislation, we now have an additional package store license that's available, um, for those interested. I'm really looking for three things from the board tonight. One is to confirm that you will, would like to set a, a meeting, uh, like to set a matter on the agenda to hear any applications on your, at your July 22nd meeting. Second, that you continue to like to place a competitive premium on the equal geographic distributions of package license, package store licenses, which is essentially that there would be two in the, um, East Arlington, two in the center, and two in the Heights. To my understanding, the, the, currently there's only one in the Heights. Um, so you'd essentially be saying there's a premium on placing a license in the Heights, um, not that dissimilar to the way that we placed a premium on a certain way of distributing, uh, the more recent marijuana licenses. And then third, that all other ABCC criteria under chapter 138, section 15, 15A, and 16C, which are essentially that notices go out to a butters. We can't really change this, but just for the public's information, if you live within, if the sighting is within a certain distance of schools, churches, things like that, those folks need to be notified and have an opportunity to object to a license. Um, so I don't think that the board, uh, there needs to be a, a robust discussion of the other criteria unless the board would like that. But, um, the, the, we have a little bit less latitude here because chapter 138 sort of sets the basic criteria for qualification and your major, um, role would be choosing competitively between two candidates based on the quality of their business and presentation as well as their loc, proposed location.
I'd just say that the one item that jumped out is I agree that, I think when we first discussed this, that the intent was that this would be a Heights because we had an odd number of, of licenses at five, that the, this one would be a Heights location. If not, unless no Heights locations apply, then we'll reassess that, but I would agree with that.
Um, I have one thought, which is, and I'm curious what, um, literally everybody here says professionally and elected, uh, July or August? My thought would be that we're actually too tight on July right now for doing, and I would rather give people a little bit more runway. Uh, and I, I am the person who said in, I forget, April saying, like, I wanna do this quickly and I'm, but I'm all, I, I do also wanna do it right. So I'm curious what everyone else thinks.
I think August is fine.
Yeah, that, 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 that's fine. And I think there are some notice requirements that would make it difficult for perhaps a July meeting. Just, is that, is that right? I'm looking at you, Doug, uh, just in turn.
The eighth meeting, if you want. It's up to the board.
Okay.
I, I think the turn, the turnaround on the, um, notices would be a little bit tight. Um, I don't know personally how many folks are waiting in the wings. Um, so more time certainly wouldn't hurt from the perspective of being able to give everybody the information they need.
I think that that's part of my motivation is that I'm thinking with a couple extra weeks, we might, we might, the quality of the applications might improve.
Yeah.
Is what I'm after.
I, I just wanna be clear that, that, you know, the last time you engaged in this process, to my understanding, was primarily the presentations that were made. So it's a little bit distinct from the, uh, marijuana retail because in the alcohol context, they apply to the ABCC and us in a sort of parallel fashion almost. It's not, they apply here first, then go to the Cannabis Control Commission. It works in a slightly different timeline. And there's a little bit more of a set sort of practice and set of standards at the ABCC, which has been an operation for a long time. So, um, I would assume that the applications that you'll see are gonna be very similar to any of the other applications you've ever seen, uh, but you'll have the opportunity to vet the applicants with questions, um, about the site and hear more about their plans and experience.
Yeah. Looking at the schedule, the August meeting is only a few weeks after the July meeting. So it's not like we're pushing it out a whole month. I think that's, it makes more sense to, to get a little more time for it and have a meeting in between.
So I think we've got consensus on August and yes, geographic distribution. Is there anything else you needed?
No, Mr. Chair, I think what I'll do is, uh, advise the Public Information Officer and work with the Select Board Office to essentially have a bit of a news release inviting applicants in a similar fashion to the way we handled the marijuana retailers and the way we've handled alcohol, uh, package store retailers in the past.
Excellent. Just a question for Mr. Heim. Just on the Heights, how does that get word? Is it a, in the criteria, there becomes a preference if there's a, a Heights location? Or, or I'm just curious as to how that is evaluated if there's several that come in throughout the town?
Mr. De Corsi, I think what I would, I think what I plan to do is in the notice itself, it would essentially state that the Select Board sought an additional license for the purposes of citing a, you know, package store in Arlington Heights. Um, all applicants are invited to apply, but please let it be known that the Select Board is placing a premium on an equal geographic distribution of these. So I think we have a pretty good enough understanding of what constitutes the Heights and what doesn't. Um, so I don't know that there will be a formal checkoff box on the application to say this is in the Heights, but there will be, you know, obviously required, you know, give the site location to business.
Okay. Thank you.
You don't need a vote, right?
No, sir.
Right. Discussion? All right. Next item, discussion approval of sustainable transportation plan and creation advisory committee. Mr. Chaplain.
Mr. Chairman, uh, to be clear, the discussion is about the plan and the approval is about the committee. I'm not asking you to approve a plan tonight. Um, so very quickly, I think the board might recall that when I presented on the FY20 budget, I talked about funding the creation of a sustain, sustainability, sustainable mobility plan. Uh, and I think I just proved why we are now trying to call it a sustainable transportation plan because of the mouthful that a sustainable mobility plan is. Uh, so we're moving forward with that funded $60,000 from the general fund operating budget, $20,000 from the CDBG budget. Uh, and it's in the memo in front of you, but for the purposes of those watching at home, this plan would provide a vision for the development of the transportation system in Arlington over the next 20 years. It would look at all sorts of transportation and mobility, including walking, bicycling, uh, bicycling, public transportation, driving, shared mobility, and micro mobility. Shared mobility is things like Uber and Lyft as well as Zipcar. Micro mobility talks about things like Lime Bikes, Bike Share, scooters, and things of that nature. Uh, we've laid out a plan before you of how, how we would plan to put out an RFP, what the scope would be, and the process we'd follow to put together such a plan. But we'd also like to put together an advisory committee, a 12-member advisory committee that's outlined in the, um, outlined in the memo. Uh, again, for those watching at home, we'd be talking about having a representative from the Transportation Advisory Committee, the Bicycle Advisory Committee, Parking Advisory Committee, Disability Commission, East Arlington Livable Streets, Walking in Arlington, the Department of Planning and Community Development, the Department of Public Works, the Arlington Police Department, Health and Human Services Department, the Town Manager's Office, and a representative of the Arlington Business Community. I think in, um, a lot of ways, this plan is a long time coming and could hopefully make both, I'll say, my work, the work of staff, and the board's work easier in terms of putting together a lot of parameters about how we'll consider things and certain traffic-type matters that often come before the board and/or various boards in this town. Uh, and happy to answer any questions you might have, but tonight would, um, like your approval of these, of this committee makeup.
Never heard of Walking in Arlington. Is it, Mr. Curl must be on that.
Yeah. It's, uh, predominantly populated by Rachel Stark, who is a local activist. I think, I think she does have a membership of the group, but more than likely when you see Walking in Arlington, it means that Rachel Stark will have a role in the committee.
Move approval, as outlined in the memorandum before us.
Second.
All right.
You know, I, I actually meant to mention with the successful override on Tuesday of last week, as the board certainly knows, $200,000 of increased funds for the town really was dedicated directly towards implementing whatever it is that this plan's gonna recommend. So it's very timely that we get these done. And this year, we would plan on putting the monies approved in that override towards resurfacing the sidewalks in Arlington Center. But in the future then, in, in future fiscal years, we'll have the roadmap for what to do.
Seeing no further discussion, motion by Mr. Hurd, second by Mr. De Corsi. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approved through zero.
Thank you.
Next up, correspondence received, requesting change to tax calculation method.
Do we have a motion?
See.
Yeah.
Second.
And so did we, this actually gets sent to the assessors as well?
I believe so. I think they were, I think the director of assessors, assessing was copying.
Yeah. Um, can I suggest we actually also explicitly forward this to the assessors as well?
It was forwarded to Mr. Tierney.
Yeah, I know. I wanna make sure the elected officials in that, get, get the memo, literally. Is, is that acceptable?
Yes.
Uh, further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. New business.
It's a lot of your neighbors, Mr. De Corsi.
Well, my neighbors, it's, uh, well, now that you raised it, Mr. Hurd.
I, I did notice one absence though.
Yeah. Well, there was a number of neighbors and, and obviously it was a, an issue of major concern, um, to people who lived in Kellman Manor. That's what this letter is about. And, um, I, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of upset, um, down there in terms of increases in values. And, and the last thing a town wants to do is pit one neighborhood against another. Um, and, and so I, I think there, there was a feeling that while there, there was an intent that the, the results of what happened last year with the assessments, um, really disfavored a, a particular location. And, and, um, I, I think there's a hope, and I'm not endorsing where this was sent, but I think there's a hope that, um, in the future that, um, that the process, which isn't our process, it's, it's the assessor's process to take a look at the whole town when the work is done and see if there's anomalies and, and maybe, um, step back and, and, and see if, if the results, initial results maybe, um, are too harsh in different areas. So that's, that, that's my two cents on that without, it's, it's not our job, it's the assessor's job. Um, but there's a lot of concern and, and there's still a lot of concern going forward about it.
Thank you. Uh, new business, Mrs. Kapalka.
Just a reminder, if you're free on Saturday, who's ever available, the Schwarmill is having their open house from 12 to four.
Thank you.
Mr. Heim?
I have one small piece of new business, just to keep the board informed. Uh, our special counsel with respect to, uh, the Mugar litigation, uh, Huggins and Witten have been, uh, joined with Copeland and Page. Um, it won't affect their representation of us in any way. And the way that their partnership is structured, um, it won't also give Copeland and Page any particular review over their direct representation of us. Uh, it's mostly relative to one of the two partners in that firm and not Mr. Witten, who's the actual special counsel here, and will only be of counsel at Copeland and Page. But if the board has any questions or concerns about it, Attorney Witten is happy to come before the board and I'm happy to discuss it on a future agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Uh, two pieces. One, um, last Friday, uh, afternoon, four o'clock, the High School Building Committee met in the aftermath of the successful ballot question. And we did vote to move forward with hiring our construction manager, Consigli Construction. So we're, we're finalizing the contract. Doug's actually been working on that quite a bit, uh, with outside, uh, construction council. But we think we've got a really, really good construction team. Uh, this team also worked on the Winchester High School construction project. The team itself, I believe, has 29 K through 12 projects under its belt. Uh, they, I think, put together a very impressive presentation and they're gonna come right on board, start working with the architects, uh, start doing cost estimation. And their current, um, plan, which will evolve over the next several months, actually talks about starting to see action on that site in early 2020 in terms of starting to dig geothermal wells, relocating utilities, and getting the site prepped for construction. So we're not wasting any time after last Tuesday's successful vote. Um, heading in a different direction, I also want to announce, we received an email from the Tree Committee. I think, uh, the chairman received that same email Wednesday morning. Uh, I'll confirm it with the board depending on weather, but Wednesday morning in the site where there used to be what I believe was a large elm tree at Uncle Sam Park, um, that didn't survive the reconstruction of Uncle Sam Park, is gonna be the planting of a 30-foot Sunset Maple Tree to replace that tree. That's gonna be nine o'clock Wednesday morning. Uh, it's a pretty big tree to put in the ground. So if any of the members of the board are around to come down and maybe throw a ceremonial first shovel or last shovel load, whatever it might be. Uh, it was picked out, handpicked by Tim Laqueeve, the tree warden. He searched all around to find the right tree, uh, to plant there. And it's being purchased with some of the McKeckern bequest that was left to the town several years ago for tree planting in Arlington.
What time is that?
Nine AM on Wednesday.
Is that gonna mess with the layout of the, the event we just, we just approved today?
That's all a mulcher, it should be.
So we're gonna have to be, we're, so we're gonna be putting gallons and gallons of water down there, right?
So Mike Radamacher tells me that when you plant the tree that's that large, I mean, you should water it, but it isn't as dependent on watering as a sapling because you're putting a whole root ball with the dirt and everything in the ground. So it's basically already established. It doesn't need as much root generation as a sapling would.
Interesting. Okay.
That's what they tell me.
Yeah. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Mr. Corsi?
Yes, a couple of things. Um, first, I, I, since our last meeting, we had, the town had Porch Fest and, uh,
I attended it.
Okay, great. Yeah. And so there were over a hundred sites. I know you want to mention. It was, it was fantastic. And, um, and Mr. Hurd actually was a, played in one of the bands, uh, there and, uh, I, I saw the band, did a great job.
I pretended to play, had a couple of chords.
But it's just really a, a, a great event and it's grown so much over the years and, and all different types of music. And, uh, just, I thought it was a great day for Arlington. Um, and, and just to see neighbors and, and people around town that you haven't seen. So I thought that was a, a huge success. Uh, the second one I have is a question for the town manager. And, and I've gotten this from six or seven people in the last couple weeks. And it has to do with the sign in Arlington Center announcing that the bridge, the Broadway Bridge outside of Ball Square in Somerville is closed. And the question I've gotten from people is how did Arlington Center get selected? Because when you're coming down Mass Ave, getting through Ball Square usually isn't the first thing on your mind.
I know.
Um, so I, I imagine it's something to do with the state, but I just was wondering if, if you wouldn't mind following up on that so I could, uh, get back to some people.
Go ahead. Yes.
No, I also had a great time at Porch Fest. We had great weather. I, um, I didn't publicize it. Got too many people ahead of time. I could tell people after. So maybe next year I'll be a little more adamant about it. But no, it was great. We, we had fun. I, it's such a great event for every year that we've had. It's been great. So I haven't got to go to the Beer Fest yet, but maybe that'll be on my agenda for this Saturday. And then I went by the Feast of the East this weekend, another great event that, you know, I know the, it's been kind of a godsend for the East Arlington, uh, local businesses to get people through their doors. So, and then, uh, I think that's it.
Uh, I, yeah. So I actually, I picked my, I went to the Beer Garden and the Porch Fest on the, on, and so that's where I picked up my map was, and I would checked out the cheerful Where You Sit, uh, which was similarly laid out, like, laid out in the Uncle Sam Plaza. But I agree that the, that, the bike path itself is gonna, is gonna, gonna be the tricky part there. And, uh, walked down Mass Ave because I was there for like the part, I, I didn't do, make any of the Western acts. Like, so I was only there for the second half. So it was like all the Eastern part. And I was walking down the street and I could, I have literally never seen so many people on the sidewalk of Mass Ave as I did that day. It was like, yeah, it was really.
Very interesting. Um, and finally, my second item is, of course, I want to thank the voters of Arlington for approving the, uh, our new high school and the operating override. Uh, we, you know, this
Uh, we, you know, this board endorsed it, and I think it was the right choice, and I'm really glad that it had, um, such widespread agreement among the voters who came out. I wanna thank everyone who voted, whether you voted yes or no, I really appreciate your participation, and I wanna particularly thank the volunteers on the campaign, 'cause it's, I've, I mean, as you all know, I've, like, this, like, I, I haven't, um, I, you know, I made the motion on the last override in 2011, and in some ways, this was like an eight-year project to get us to this one, and you can only take it so far, and then the campaign takes over, and all those volunteers, and I really appreciate all the work they did. So, that was all I got. Uh, our next meeting is July twenty-second. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.